Work session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the budget work session with the city council and staff this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to Erin Bassalotti, our city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight, we have a budget work session. We're going to talk about some projections for year end, and then we'll also go over priorities. And a couple of questions to look forward to as we get ready for budget process. We have several members of the staff tonight. We have our budget manager Kimberly Burleson. We have our planning director Karen, and we also have Kip Wiley sitting in the back. For public works or any other questions we have for him. He vanished, you know, he's a magician. Alright, so the objective, of course, of our budget every year, it's to be accountable stewards to our residents and taxpayers. But we want to provide excellent service to the community. And of course, we want to plan for the present and future through capital improvement, planning and water, wastewater, streets. Park and recreation, technology, and our city facilities. And then we also want to retain and attract top talent. So those are kind of the core. Missions that we have as we make the budget. We want to make sure that we're considering all of those things before that we do anything else. Alright, so tonight, we're going to go over revenue and expenditure projections. We'll look at how twenty four is going. Year to date and where we think it's going to be for the rest of the year. And then we'll also look at some preliminary expectations for what twenty five is going to look like. Then we're going to go into the council budget priorities that we've heard from you. And then we'll go into council and staff identified priorities. Alright, so I'll go ahead and jump right into the most updated sales tax that we have through the month of. August, which is sales tax from July received in August. And you can see on here. Every month that we've had for the year so far, except for March has been up. I'll give you the July totals in a little bit, but you can see that bright blue line is twenty four so far, and we have been up every single month. Somewhere between two and a half to about four and a half percent. Lodging revenue here has been the reverse. We've been down every single month. Some months, we've been down, you know, one or two percent. Some months, we've been down twenty, twenty-five percent, just kind of varied. And we do anticipate that to continue through the rest of the year with December thirty first, assuming that they. Are required to stop, they will, we will be losing about sixty of the short-term rentals. From that, so we'll consider that in our lodging revenue expectations for next year. Alright, so year to date through July, we're up two point three percent, up a hundred and ten thousand dollars over last year with four point eight million dollars in collections. Our month of July was a little bit softer than the previous months at up two point two percent, which was seventeen thousand dollars. Seventeen thousand eight hundred over last year, so eight hundred and fifteen thousand collected for last month. And then lodging tax, it's down fifteen point four percent year to date with July down twenty-five percent. Alright, any questions on that before we move into to the rest? Okay. Alright, so our overall two thousand twenty-four year in projections that we're looking at, we. We're up to, I'm sorry, we're up two point three percent over last year. And so when I looked at these numbers, I looked at every single month that we had. And when I took out the month of March, was the, which is the only month that we were down, we were up about three point seven percent. Year over year, if we exclude March from that, so I assumed conservatively that we're going to end the year up about three percent. Over last year, and then I use the same expectation for two thousand twenty-five. So that's kind of where you're going to see my projections for the end of the year coming in. So. Revenue projections, the budget for revenue, we had fifteen million, two sixty-three. This is a little bit inflated because it had assumed originally that we were going to have a little bit more property tax than we ended up. Having at the end of the year, so that was about two hundred thousand of the difference. And then we were down about eighty thousand dollars with sales tax, so that makes up the majority of that difference you see. So I'm projecting two thousand twenty-four to end fourteen million, eight hundred thousand. Which is about four hundred thousand less than the revenue. And then expenditures, we originally had fifteen million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We're projecting to end the year at about fourteen million, two sixty. That's a combination of, we didn't spend in the budget, we had a fiber project planned for about two hundred fifty thousand. That's not going to happen. And then the majority of the rest of this is salary savings. So we were a little bit short again this year, but I think we were stronger than we were last year in terms of staffing. So. That's what makes up the difference. So our original budget, we were supposed to be three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars spending over out of our fund balance, and we end up. It looks like saving about five hundred and forty-eight thousand instead. Any questions on that piece? Okay. Alright, now we'll go into some inflation numbers. So what, what do we think, what's happening out there? And what do we think is going to happen next year? So the CPI U index for Aurora Lakeland in Denver, which is the chart you can see on the right there, it's up one point nine percent June. It's actually July two thousand twenty-four versus July two thousand twenty-three, if we look at a twelve-month rolling period. So we are, inflation was one point nine percent basically for the year. And then July and June, we're up point six percent. So we definitely are seeing inflation cool significantly. That's a big reason why we just saw the Fed do what they did. The overall. Inflation for the United States for the last twelve months was two point five percent. So Colorado has been a little bit less. On that measure, metric than the, the United States, but so Colorado is one point nine percent. The inflation growth index is expected to also continue to slow to one point nine percent again in two thousand twenty-five. So we, we are definitely seeing. A settling in of that lower inflation number of about two percent, which is what the Fed had hoped for this whole time. So. Let's hope that that stays true. Energy index decreased two point seven percent in June and July, and year over year, energy prices fell eight point four percent. Social Security COLA, which is usually a pretty good indication of where they think inflation is going. They're estimated to rise two point five percent in two thousand twenty-five, so all pretty consistent. If you look across the board there, and then tax brackets will increase by approximately two point eight percent in two thousand twenty-five. Versus the seven point one percent we saw last year. Questions there? Alright, so interest. Projections, so the Fed yesterday just reduced rates by point five. So we saw the current Fed fund rate go from five point five to five point oh. Since yesterday, and they indicated potentially two additional reductions by the end of two thousand twenty-four. With additional four more cuts estimated in two thousand twenty-five. So that's, that's what we're expecting in terms of interest rate cuts. For the next eighteen months. Year to date, the city has earned five point four percent on our invested funds. We've been doing very well with that over the last two years. So we will expect to see that go down a little bit. So when we're doing the budget projections, instead of the five point four, we're probably going to be looking closer to three and a half or so when we do the projections there. And you can see on the chart here. This is how interest rates have gone up since the end of two thousand twenty-two, and they just went up and up and up. And then they flatlined for about a year, and now they're going down.
So two additional reductions this year and four next year.
Yep.
Projected.
Projected.
That's one, that's hundred fifty basis points. That's one point five percent if it's just a quarter. Reduction. That's a lot.
That's a lot. That's a lot. It could potentially be more. We'll see. We'll see how things go. Yes, it will. Okay, so based on whatever thing I just showed you, our two thousand twenty-five budget assumptions are three percent increase in sales tax again for next year. And one point nine percent inflation rate. Important to note, House Bill one zero zero one did pass earlier, it was earlier this month. And that is expected to cause an approximate fourteen percent decrease in property tax collections for the city. We did do a three mil reduction last year temporarily, so this would probably be pretty equivalent to that temporary reduction. So just something to consider as we move. Forward. Because they, they did do a pretty deep cut. I think it was about seven hundred and eighty million dollars that they, they effectively cut across the state based on the, on this bill. Okay. So the council priorities that we discussed at the council retreat and also that we've had for the last couple of years. We have public safety, we have staff attraction and retention, we have housing and zoning. We have transportation and utilities, which is street repairs and water planning and everything else that's included with those. We have economic development, which I know we've spent quite a bit of time talking about, looking at Main Street, looking at the visitor center. And a few other things that we're looking at in that one. So I think that encompasses. A little bit more than just economic development, but also customer service and planning and development. Friendliness and just, just all of that kind of encompassed in there. And then well-managed city budget and finances. Am I missing anything from this slide that should be up there? I have another slide where I'll go into more detail, but is there any other overarching priority that I missed? No. Always want to make sure. Okay, so the council budget request that I've heard so far for two thousand twenty-five, capital improvement planning. Will continue, as you can see so far this summer, there's been a lot of work done on Memorial Park. There's still be a little bit more concrete work done there and improvements made there. We did the Meadowwood open study, open plans, master plan study, apologies. And so we'll talk about that at the end of the meeting, just some direction as to how we'd like to proceed with that. Staff supplies, tools and equipment. I know I hear from you all the time. We want to be. Making sure that our employees have the, have all the right tools and equipment to do their jobs. We don't want any excuses on that. Financial support for historical preservation committee with the Roberts House. And I think that's the biggest one right now with a potential grant for asbestos mitigation. So I've heard from that one. Landscape and beautification, I've heard a lot of feedback on the medians and on the downtown, so. That will be a major priority. Retained staffing and staff compensation, obviously, we can't do any of that if we don't have the right people in the right places. So that's something we're always looking at. And I know. I've heard a lot of support from council on that one. Retooling the economic development focus. So that's exactly what we were just talking about, having someone who can assist with Main Street. Do grant writing, visitor center, all of the above. Alright, increased legislative involvement. So that's working with a lobbyist that's being more involved in what's coming down the pike and also seeing if we can make. A difference or an influence on some of those legislative matters. And then the debt fund balance reserve, making sure that we have a healthy reserve and that we're focused on paying off debt. These are, these are the top priorities that I've heard from you so far that you want in the budget. On this slide, am I missing any item? That you wanted to see considered as we're moving forward with the budget process?
What do we still owe on the Aquatics Center debt?
The Aquatics Center debt, yes.
Yeah, what, what do we still owe on that?
We owe, I think it's six point two million. Let me check that.
Yes, we owe, at the end of this year, we'll owe six million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
And we can't really get aggressive with it till December of twenty-five, also correct?
That is correct.
Alright, thank you.
At that point, we can refinance, we could come to pay it off early.
Erin, what's the reserve balance at this point? What percentage?
I don't have the exact number.
Is it still over nineteen?
It's with the year in projection, it's, it's well over that. But that's, that's part of what we want to program the money towards in the budget. So I'll bring you a couple of different recommendations for that. Prior to that, yes.
Do you know at the top of your head what the interest rate, average interest rate is on that debt? Do you remember?
I want to say it's. I want to say it's two and a half to four and a half, but I don't have it.
It's low enough that refinancing probably would not be enough.
In the near future, yeah. Now, by the end of next year, I will have, we'd have to see if it dropped below three percent, but that's.
It's the cost of reissuing, have, have to take them into.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, we'd have to want to pay down a substantial chunk of it.
The math has to make sense, so.
Alright, so on, on this slide, I did want to talk about Meadowwood. I wanted to hear your. Direction in terms of, do we want to be? Aggressive with paying down the Aquatics Center debt, or do we want to have a priority on? Capital planning for Meadowwood and City Hall, what, what is the council's feeling towards?
Yes. Yeah, I think in a perfect world, if there ever was one, I'd certainly like to see what we can do about getting the Aquatic Center debt. Dramatically reduce if not. On a plan to get it completely paid off. But per, you know, Councilmember Jones's point. I don't think we can sit on Meadowwood either and not do anything there. So I'd like to see if we can do some of both.
Well, for the Aquatic Center, we can't begin to double down on payments until twenty twenty-five, calendar year twenty twenty-five, and. That should be a priority for the next budget, certainly.
Yeah.
But the briefing that we received from the consultant at the last meeting, talk, we, we asked them to. Pull out the infrastructure costs that were affiliated or associated with Meadowwood. Is that going to be in the presentation tonight? Because I would like to see that a priority.
I can pull that up.
Yeah, I mean, all the other things are, are wonderful. Objectives, but you have to start with infrastructure, and I would hope that that would be part of our priorities.
Absolutely.
I think that's a good idea.
Last year, we had two point four million dollars earmarked in the capital. You can see from this, we had about, you can estimate about an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar swing in our revenue projections at the beginning of the year towards the end. For our revenues and expenditures. And so we, we can assume we'll have at least three point two five million dollars to look at in terms of where we want to program that. As that one-time money.
Without, without impacting our reserve?
Correct. I think it's important consideration to have a somewhat of a ballpark as to what, what is we're working with.
Yeah.
And then there's also the question of Avenger.
Yes.
Because I know that we wanted to do some investment in that as well.
Yeah.
From that perspective, so Parks and Rec and.
Right, so Avenger and Meadowwood and. Whatever that is, Bergstrom.
Berks and Park.
Yeah, right. So that, it seems like Parks and Rec are getting, that's a lot of attention.
People love their Parks and Rec.
Yep.
Well, and, and you still have the City Hall. As well, so.
Correct, there's a lot of priorities.
That's, that's a big one. I know it's a big one.
No, we're fine.
Yeah, until the ceiling starts leaking out there.
August, yeah.
After Nick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one thing I did want to say about Avenger staff is proposing, well, we haven't, I haven't made any proposals, but staff is requesting at the staff level to me. To put in the budget for a trails person for maintenance and a trails person for planning. So I would imagine there wouldn't be a lot of capital expenditure in next year or request, but there would be requests for planning for it and starting to maintain it. Is there support for that, or is that something we don't want to see?
That would be for.
Being allowed to not.
That would be for Avenger or?
Avenger.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, what kind of, what kind of response did you feel like you got on that?
I got a mo- mostly yes, but, but maybe.
Yeah, I mean, with.
When we do the proposed budget, you have the opportunity to review it and say no to whatever's in there, but.
Yeah. It, there's a, there's a nonprofit that, that is doing that now, right? Volunteer? Yeah.
Is that Chris's group?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tell her trails.
Maybe we could kick in something to subsidize them. To, to make it bigger than just the.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're going to look at fundraising and we've done some trail cleanup around here, trails I didn't even know existed, actually. It's interesting.
But the two positions that you're proposing would be exclusively for the Avenger.
They would be trails in general.
Okay, thank you.
Programming and maintenance in general. That's, I haven't proposed that yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I do, I do want to make that clear. I have not proposed that. I'm just feeling it out. And I know Cindy has done a phenomenal job with fundraising so far for Avenger, so that's been incredibly helpful. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I know it's pretty large.
It was, we projected was eighty thousand, and she said, the last spread she, she shared with us, she was at eighty-nine thousand.
Alright, yep. Specifically like. Hello. Specifically eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. Very nice.
That's a great job, you and your board, both of them.
I knew Cindy wouldn't miss.
Just about you.
I knew Cindy wouldn't miss a budget meeting. Okay, so aside from those incredibly major items, is there anything else that council wanted to see in the budget?
I, I'd just like to, to. Reiterate something I typically say is to really be very cognizant of looking at our competition. With regards to salaries and benefits, the compensation package. I know that the county did a huge. In the, in the Sheriff's Department, a huge increase to, for retaining. And so I just want to be sure that we give that a really hard look to be sure that our employees are.
When was our last salary survey?
Uh, we did in two thousand twenty-two.
So.
I was.
Next year, next year.
We've done quite a bit internally of looking at the market and doing employer council studies. So I wasn't going to recommend until the following year that we do another study because we have done a lot of. We, we're continuing to make sure that we're in the market across the board. Anytime that we see any posting that worries us, we go ahead and look at it right away. We have looked at the Sheriff's Office compared to the PD, we've made adjustments. We'll want to look at adjustments for next year as well.
Thank you.
But, but thank you for that support because that's vitally important to us, having the right people in the right places.
And Erin, are we still thinking about a second code enforcement person?
If that's, if that's what you all would like to see.
Is our code enforcement full time now?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Couldn't remember if.
Yes, and, and a lot of our issue, I think, was that we did have a gap in that function for many months.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah. But yes, I do have it in my, I do have it in my list for the budget.
So, so far it's been competitive with the county. Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't they also make a big adjustment to their 401K side?
They did.
And that's the one that's going to hurt is that. If, if we, if we were wanting to say match something like that, that was the big one, wasn't it?
Yeah, so the county now is an eight percent contribution with a four percent, I'm sorry, backwards. They do a four percent contribution from the employee and an eight percent match. The city does a five percent contribution and a five percent match for. Our general employees for the PD, they're eight percent and eight percent.
Oh.
And part of that is because our, our sworn officers do not contribute to social security. That election was made.
Yes. And that is way before me.
And so they do not, they do not. No, we have a defined contribution plan. We don't have a defined benefit plan with Para, we're not Para.
We, we do our own thing. Uh, we also got hit with a twenty-three percent increase in health insurance this year. So we are, we're, we're looking at all of this as we're building the budget out right now. Because I did hear loud and clear from you that you wanted us to be more aggressive on benefits, and then we got hit with that, and we're like, okay, let's, let's see what we can do. Okay, so is, so code enforcement, that, that was a good one. I do have that on my list. I don't have it on this slide, but I do have it on my list.
Well, unless what you were saying a second ago is that. We didn't have anybody for a while, and so things backed up. And, and now we have a full-time person. Are you saying that that person will be able to manage it once it's all caught up?
I think we're having trouble internally even figuring that out because I think we're on our third person in three years. Is that the correct, Karen?
I believe so.
I think so. I, I think.
So there's an inconsistent gap.
Since I've been here.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I, it's hard for us to say if we got the right person in that position, which I think we do now, and we trained that person up. I think they can be very effective if. We're able to keep them long-term.
Well, what we had anticipated is when the STR ordinance passed, that there would be an increased need for enforcement of that particular. Code.
It's possible. It's possible. I think, I know Karen's team is doing a lot of work right now in outreach to the SDRs that are going to have to stop operating. And so we're doing that upfront.
Yeah, we're in the process of preparing that information to go out to all those, those current licensees. To, to get that, that whole discussion started with them, so they're not caught by surprise on December twentieth. We. Like to engage them now. And then related to code enforcement, I just met with our city attorney yesterday about our nuisance ordinances and regulations. Because I, I really believe that there's some cleanup that can happen there that will require ordinance changes. That will make that process easier to administer and, and, and work through. So that, if you're looking for. As much as I don't ever want to say no to staff, and I'm not, in terms of what I, we, I think would really benefit the city more is that ordinance cleanup. And they said, we can't do that without council making an ordinance change. And we're just at that initial stage of, of taking a look at, how can this be better drafted and, and easier to enforce? Giving limited resources.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so we're going on this slide.
Do you go back to the priorities? No, then, oh yeah, that's the one. So. Zoning, I get, but what's the housing part? Was that the STR thing, or what, what would we do? From the study.
It's a study that asked us to look at ways to incentivize. Builders and developers to bring in affordable housing.
Careful microphone if you would.
So this comes directly from the comp plan, the housing and zoning. Piece of it, and it is, it's making sure that we stay on top of doing housing needs assessments. It's looking for ways to. Provide funding for affordable housing, and it's also making sure that we're developing the city out for any future developments. In the best way possible.
Okay.
That the community wants, you know, it's.
Yeah.
The best way is specific to our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? I'd say that was a priority, but.
It's, yeah, it's more of our overarching priorities, just always in the comp plan. Okay, and then staff priorities. Obviously, streets, street maintenance, multimodal, making sure that ADA accessibility, wherever we can add it in. Those are a huge priority for the staff in terms of our planning for the future when we look at all these street projects. Park and downtown beautification and maintenance. That's a top priority, I can tell you that. Capital planning and preventative maintenance, we're, we're always looking at. What, what's next? What's the long-term planning, looking for all of our capital items, comprehensive water planning. Chip and I have been spending a lot of time talking about that for the last year, and that's both for the reservoir, which you're going to hear about a little bit tonight. And then also water acquisition, and that's also water policies as those are going to come in the next few months. GIS development, that's been huge. We've been working on our asset management system. We have been developing our GIS tables and our ArcGIS. At the city, which is pretty awesome, considering where we were two or three years ago to where we are today. So we're going to look to continue to grow that. Aging vehicle and equipment replacements, we have done a tremendous amount of that over the last few years, so we're going to see a little bit less of that this year for the aging vehicle. But equipment replacement, we are looking at, I think we have a, a holder that we need to replace and some other larger items that we need for snow plowing. So that's, that's that one. And then planning and development, we, we are working on that new permit. Application system, and we'll continue to look for better ways to improve that relationship and just our process in general.
Right.
Alright, so that's. That's really the biggest items. I did want to spend some time though talking about the. The Meadowwood study, I have, let me pull up this file. So our, the budget presentation itself, we will have the budget to you all by October fifteenth. We're hoping to have it out a little bit early, but October fifteenth, it will be delivered to you at the very latest. And then we'll have the budget presentation on October seventeenth. We'll have a work session after that on November seventh to talk about. Any and all of your, your items that you would like to see different in there or any questions that you have. And if we need additional work sessions, we'll do that. And then that's when the budget ordinances will come. Okay, so let me get out of this and pull up this.
While you're doing it, I'm just going to ask a question for as far as logistics. When is your plan, when you bring the budget to us, will it be balanced, or will we have questions? And decisions to make to balance? Do you know? If you don't know, don't answer. Curious.
Any, my goal will always be in our five-year plan to have a structurally sound budget going forward, any. Overspending, which I think is what you're asking, any funding over our revenues would only be in the current year, and it would only be for capital items. So we will, I will never bring you an unbalanced budget unless it's for capital items that are one-time.
What, what's the state mandate for a balanced budget? Is there such a thing? Where you would not present to the council? A budget that would exceed our revenues?
I don't know the answer to that because you could, if I did that, I would have to, I would have to include debt financing in there to make up the structural deficit. So I think the answer is you can't bring an unbalanced budget. I mean, you, you can't bring an unbalanced budget, it would never get approved. But you, you'd have to, if, if I ever did that, and. You would have to use debt financing to, to supplement. So you'll never see that for me.
Well, and when you say revenues, current, we, the current period revenues, we. See that, and we try to balance our expenses to that, but we also have the opportunity to appropriate to spend fund balance. So in order to get to where. Erin just described would be a zero fund balance, unres- unreserved, undesignated fund balance. Um, Erin just described would be a zero fund balance, unres- unreserved, undesignated fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if anything was over our current period revenues, we would be budgeting to spend. The reserves which balances our budget. Because the balance comes from reserves plus revenues minus current period expenditures. You were equals zero or a positive number.
Essentially.
Does that help?
Uh, yes, I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, unless direction from council changes seventeen percent is the minimum fund balance I would ever bring to council. So if it ever was looking like we needed, we wanted to do a capital project for many years, I would have to include debt financing in there. And still maintain that seventeen percent balance going forward.
You know, in the discussion last year, um, seventeen versus twenty versus twenty-one percent. Uh, helped inform the council make a deci- to make a decision about a, a temporary reduction of our mill levy. Um, and at that time, we wanted to maintain, the council wanted to maintain at least a twenty percent reserve. So I, I would just ask that everyone think about the future in terms of a reduction in overall property tax. Revenue and the necessity of possibly reinstating. Uh, some amount of those mill levies. And also decreasing our, our reserve.
And I don't have the property, I don't have the notice of valuation yet to give you an estimate. An estimate of how much house bill one zero zero one will affect us, so as soon as I have that, I will send that out.
Thanks.
Alright, so here was, here is the Meadowwood Sports Complex Master Plan.
One tennis court. Been relegated.
It's all very beautiful.
I gotta tell you, no one saw that here, so. I don't think they play chips.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. It's like a.
It's like a thankful. No, that's, you kind of think.
Alright, here it is, now.
Oh.
I apologize in advance, I did not make this.
Would you like me to make copies of the legible?
Oh, if you had, that'd be great if you have that.
Yes. Of the whole document or just the budget?
Yeah, ju- just that infrastructure page.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, there's no way I'm gonna be able to.
Just, can you filter it out?
I had to get a ruler.
Alright, let me see if I can.
Light straight.
Yeah, even if I try to go one bigger. Can you all see that or no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. So let's look. Wha- what are the biggest priority items you'd like to see first, because they're, they're not really in order.
So, uh, I, can you go back to the major staff priorities list? Please. I just.
Look at your slides.
I might not have been, might have missed it, but what was the, the major step party for planning and development, what does that entail?
You, you should have it too in front of you.
There's no.
It just, it's just a bullet.
Oh, the planning.
Yeah, the planning and development.
The city right now is working on implementing a permit tracking system.
Okay.
So that's a big item for us, we um, we're working, it's, the staff is working on it, we also have a consultant assisting us to roll that out. And in the, the same process of rolling that out, we're also looking at our planning process to make sure that it all drives and makes sense as we're going through that. So that's.
Okay.
Whatever happened to our zone consolidation effort zoning code? Uh, the, the code update is going on at the same time. Um, and those are two giant undertakings that uh, organization of our size probably should not be doing simultaneously, but we are. Um, and the good news is there are um, things translating back and forth between those, those processes. That we're able, as we work on the code, go, oh, we should need to make sure that this happens in the permit tracking system. And as we're looking at the structure of how permits are processed and issued, it's like, oh, when we rewrite our administration chapters, like we need to make sure this is clearly spelled out. So they're, they're actually um, balancing each other, it's, it's just a tremendous amount of work.
Uh, primarily the task for the planning department or are you also engaging the planning commission? Or is it still with the consultant or all three?
For which one?
Zoning code consolidation.
Um, the, the zoning um, ordinance rewrite. Um, I continue to invite city council to those work sessions as well as the board of adjustment. Um, since they're the primary users or you see applications related to what comes out of that code. Um, and that's all in addition to the planning commission. Now, in terms of who actually attends, it is uh, primarily the planning commission. Uh, Catherine, um, Nakai has been a diehard attendee, uh, as has uh, primarily Valerie, Valerie Lundy from the board of adjustment. Um, she's been in there more than any of the other BOA members, so it's um, nice to have that representation to. Um, make sure those interests are, are covered and, and dealt with. And then um, we also got some feedback from Parks and Record Advisory Board that um, they wanted to talk a little bit. So um, our consultant and I just met with them at their last meeting, I guess it was last Wednesday. And had a, had a great conversation with them that um, will cause us to um, make things a few, a bit more clear within the code. As, as a result of that, that time with them.
Okay.
It's coming together, it's just very slow, very slow.
On that note, Erin and, and it's, and council, one of the things that I'm hoping to see. Um, before I'm out of here, is that I think that. We went through a very um, vigorous, rigorous process with a, a simultaneous processing of its application through the planning. Department and the planning commission. For what is the Tava House, which we had a beautiful groundbreaking today. I would hope that we would use that as a prototype and a goal. To make that our standard operating procedure for processing applications through the system. So that is a, that's something that I'm hoping to see, and I think that um. It would be very well received in our community if we could move in that direction to do instead of a sequential. Processing a simultaneous processing of applications for development. Thank you.
So you'll take the yellow and the green on there, that's just me going through and.
Oh, I was gonna ask you, yeah, it, okay. Thank you.
Mayor, you referring to the preliminary plan and the final plan or the, okay. So, so the SDA process that we got it.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I have the slots.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry I wasn't clear.
But it's great. Yeah, and, and that's absolutely our intention to, to hopefully to streamline things where they can't be.
Thanks Erin, I just wanted to share that with the council. And the community as well.
Alright, so I know this paper is so much easier to read. Oh, if it had line, if it had line numbers on it too, maybe I could. Alright, so if we, I know pickleball is something that we've talked a lot about in this community for the last at least two years. Um, so if we look at the pick, I'll start with pickleball. So it looks like the pickleball cost, which, there are numbers, but it's about midway down the page. It looks like pickleball has resurfacing the existing courts. It has new fencing and then it has lighting updates, which I haven't had a chance to speak with them about why the lighting updates are required, if it's. They need to be moved or I, I don't know the reason yet, but if you look at the cost for that one, it's the infrastructure costs. Are the same for the resurfacing and the lighting updates, and then the additional cost would be for the fencing, so it'd be twenty-two thousand dollars to do the resurface. Fifty-two thousand dollars for the fencing and then seventy-five for the lighting.
It's about a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, and that, that seemed pretty reasonable to me for, for something that's been a big priority for the community. I don't know if that's something you'd like to see programmed in there. Start with, and Cindy and I can obviously get some more information on the lighting piece of it, why it has to be changed.
So lighting will need to be changed because your court layouts will be different, knowing what your tennis court layouts are. So just how the cards laid out already, but lights will need to be.
And did they say? I had a question, and I don't know if you know the answer, but I had a question about, they have on here resurfacing and rather than doing new. New uh, concrete, so for the lighting, doesn't, doesn't the lighting need to go underneath? I mean, the electrical? Do we know or did they not say? I was just surprised you the quote so low for the resurfacing.
Well, this way people at home can hear. Where is the microphone? Oh, Rob has it.
One thing to keep in mind though, on pickleball, i- if you were to do the pickleball, my understanding is. That would all but eliminate all the tennis, so if we were gonna do the pickleball, then we're kind of forced to do the new tennis courts too. Or we're shutting that out, and so if you look at the tennis court cost, you know, that's, it's about the same as the pickleball, actually it's way more.
Yeah, the tennis court's gonna take a little bit more because you're gonna have to do a lot of um, infrastructure work. Um, regarding the lighting question, when I had companies come out and look at just taking some of our courts and turn them into pickleball courts. I think the electrical work they can use with what's in the concrete already.
Oh, perfect.
Is what I've understood, the um, post-tension concrete surface that we have underneath what's painted is still in, in good shape. So what they need to come in is this resurface it and put the, the actual pickleball court lines on.
Oh, excellent.
But the way I understand it is that they can work with the electrical that's currently there, they just need to put the lights.
Excellent, so that's a huge savings then.
Yeah.
And we did, we did discuss the last court, and I don't know if I can. Yeah, on the end, if they have the picture.
Yeah, the one on the end, right?
Yes, and we, we definitely can use, it's this one, we definitely can use this last court on here for tennis. Uh, I spoke with the pickleball association, they said that they would have no issue with that, so we, we can continue to use that last one.
Were they? Yeah. Thank you.
I didn't mean to say it like that.
We're just having fun with it.
No, that court will be, um, is it ADA court?
Yes.
And can be used for tennis. As well as pickleball, as you can see on there, it has both sets of lines.
Right.
So in the meantime of building the tennis courts, we could potentially use this one if they made this change ahead of time.
Yeah, this, my, my only pushback on that is, is going down to just the one, um. You're asking the tennis community to, to give up a lot.
I, it's not ideal.
Yeah.
Well, a- again, I go back to, I, I certainly want to satisfy that, that need in the community for pickleball and tennis. But we talked about what are the other basic infrastructure needs to satisfy before we begin. A pickleball ball court. Palooza. So what, I, I thought we were gonna pull out what the, you know, earthworks that needed to be done. Before we identified specific sports, um, sports complex work.
Okay, yeah, the, the reason why we had pulled out pickleball is because it didn't require any, it doesn't require any additional work. Earthwork to do, to do the pickleball. But yes, th- they did pull out in, in here, all of the infrastructure costs that would be necessary. Um, it's the, it's the parking, it's the landscaping.
Drainage is one of my concerns.
Drainage improvements, they have uh, drainage improvements and retaining wall repair is one point.
And they've got that scheduled out over, over phases.
Mm-hmm.
I think that says twenty-five thousand.
Doesn't sound right, it's the total.
Okay, they have the total cost of that as one seventy-five, and then they have the infrastructure improvements as a hundred thousand. And it. It, it's a little. It's a little hard to follow on here.
What, Erin, what are the units, what's the unit column? Cause they're, they seem to be coding. These line items by something.
I'm assuming the four is for retaining walls, but I don't know for certain.
Like what's an AL versus an SF?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
There may be.
Square footage and cubic yard.
Oh, square foot, linear foot, okay.
Okay. Okay.
I love looking at spreadsheets.
Oh, there it is, right here. So, so we'll get this, old construction.
Oh.
Infrastructure improvements and it's all, it's one point four million.
Ah.
Where did you see that?
Right down.
Oh.
First column, bottom corner.
Yeah.
Um, so right.
Okay.
And then you can see they have.
They talk about regrading the drainage swell. Um, on the failing retaining walls at the north soccer fields, they talk about our existing turf fields need to be stripped of sod. Topsoil regraded because of the top portion where our natural fields are, um, it floods. So we need to fix the drainage up there, we need to build that up and to do that, they would need to. Um, strip all of our natural turf fields and we could replace them once again with sod. Or they would recommend that we would do synthetic turf with that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, and, and then of course the irrigation systems, if we were to put sod back in. So it's a lot of the areas that they show earlier in the master plan that address.
Infrastructure.
Um, our, our existing issues.
So Erin, if, if you go scroll up. And then um, let's go over, I'll go up higher. Yeah, and there you go, and then go over that way. Maybe even higher, maybe higher.
Go all the way to the.
There it is.
There you go.
So there's, there's the infrastructure improvements right there.
First screen.
And then it goes phase one or project one, project two.
Area one, two and three.
But yeah, if you read it left to right, the total cost of everything is in this, this current left. And then the second, yeah, the second set of three columns is the.
Add to structure. Well, I guess my question for Cindy and for you is can, can the pickleball improvements be made? In conjunction with the infrastructure improvements, or does one need to happen before the other?
Hi.
So regarding the um, synthetic turf drainage swell area that could take place. I would guess simultaneously with the pickleball courts. I think it would be incredibly difficult to take all three of our natural turf fields. And wipe them out completely, that takes all of our programming away. Um, without any additional uh, sport fields to play on. Um, improvements to Panther Field and the addition of the two hundred and thirty-foot uh, turf fields.
Okay. Okay.
So, yeah, if it were, if you were asking me what my opinion were on that, I would say, when you're gonna fix the drainage up at the top. You're gonna redo all three of those fields on the top, cause you're gonna rip them all apart to, to build up that um, drainage issue. And then replace the turf, if you're gonna work out with this master plan.
But if you do the pickleball courts by themselves, you won't have to address the drainage problems until later?
Well, the drainage problems will still exist. Up at the top.
But to, to address the drainage problems, you would have to take out those other playing fields.
That's what I'm reading in this document.
Okay.
And then the question becomes, because if you're gonna tear them all apart, then you have to make a decision on synthetic turf versus just re-sodding, right?
Correct, because you'd be rebuilding them from scratch.
Perfect, thank you.
So in terms of next steps for this master plan, what, what would council like to see, do you want to see another work session? Do you want us to? Break this up into what staff sees as the priorities and order, how, how would you like us to proceed?
Yeah, I, you know, so, so the consultant, you know, did a really good job of kind of framing, you know, kind of how to go about it per se. But their goals didn't really align with, with our community goals, at least that's my opinion anyways.
Budget.
Or budget, so I think to that point, we need to look at this from a, what has to come first? No matter what, and, and to Carol's point, um, infrastructure, that's a big deal. And then I think we work backwards from there is, so what do we have to do? Then what can we do, and then what would we like to do? And that's kind of the, the order I, I tend to see it.
So I think what you suggested Erin, as far as the staff bringing some recommended priorities. For the council to consider, and then council, if you have some things that you would like to consider with the budget, bring that too. And we can have that conversation in our next work, work session to prioritize and make some decisions what would fit. Does that sound like a, a plan?
Does.
Does, yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask one more question though?
No, but thank you. Yes, you can.
Yeah. Um, project area one, two and three, what are those, you know?
So they're in the plan laid out in the master.
Okay, okay, so I can reference that.
So there's sections of the, of the uh, facility that are like, here's project area one.
Got it.
If I remember correctly, project area one is the hockey rink, pickleball courts, tennis. And then um, the two hundred and thirty-foot fields, I'd have to look at it real quick, but.
I think you're right.
And if you'd like.
But it's, it's referenceable in the master.
To um, via email, so you can look at the full entire document. Be an email so you can look at the full entire document and tie the budget into the actual.
Yes.
A work during.
Thank you.
Yes.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the first time we saw this, it was twenty nine million dollars. Now it's thirty one.
Hey, it's been a couple of weeks.
So so in other words, what you're saying is when I get it again in a couple of weeks, it's gonna be like thirty three or thirty four.
But you all know that these numbers are today and who knows what those numbers are gonna be, like you said, constantly there tomorrow.
Okay, so we we will look to schedule another work session for October thirty to go through this.
Alright.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you so much, Aaron. So we have a nine minutes, council, if you need to take a break or. Do anything and we'll. Call the meeting to order.